Well, good evening, candidates. Welcome to our beautiful state theater. Good evening, audience out there in Zoom land. This is a precedent-setting evening. We have all of our candidates minus one, who was obviously unable to make it. He might be here late, we hope. We have Alice Doughton Calvio, sorry, Alice. We have Dan Grumley, Roger Lubkerman. We have Rachel Riddell Harris. Did I say that right? I hope so. We are being filmed live by this wonderful crew here at the state theater. We have Larry Shendel, who is the technical guru, I call him, even though he told me not to call him that, and Deborah Olshewski, who is the camera and lights. Patrick Storm is also going to be doing the camera work, and Phil Jacques from ACTV, who is also helping with camera work. We have quite a team. This is going to be live on Zoom, also on the YouTube channel, from the State Theater YouTube channel, and it will be on ACTV in a few days, correct?
Yes.
Phil? Yes. If you've never been to our theater, I hope you are impressed by how beautiful it is. This renovation was done with the heart and soul of Auburn donors and a lot of special volunteers. How very important this iconic building is to our downtown corridor. We want it to remain the beautiful building it is and to have events like this. Even during this time of COVID-19, we are still moving forward with events in our state theater online and with other events that you can read if you go to our website. We have our Cinebrew going, which is movies at the Public Station House. We've already had one, we're going to have another one. It's outside, socially distanced, and it was wonderful. Next week, October 2nd, is Linda Ronstadt. Just a little plug for some things for the state theater. We have a few family members in the audience today. They've worn masks when they entered, but they have been socially distanced so they can remove their face coverings because they are not sitting close to each other. As you know, the format this evening is by Zoom webinar and will be broadcast live. The cameras are going to be filming while we take the questions, and then we are taking them through question and answer on Zoom, and we will be repeating them to you. Some questions came in early because at the bottom, after you register for the webinar, it says, "If you have any questions, please email Janice." So we did get some early questions. And I'd just like to say that those questions will be asked, but some people ask more than one question, and we are only going to allow, because of time, one question each. So I will pick which question these people ask that I will be asking you. So in case they're listening and they wonder why I didn't ask both their questions, that is why. You've been seated alphabetically to assist the camera people in setting up early, and we'll start with a two-minute introduction by each of you. You've chosen a number to determine who speaks first, and the first person to start out speaking will be Rachel. She will be introducing herself and giving a two-minute summary of why she's running, who she is, et cetera. After the question and answer session from the audience, you will each have a chance to wrap up with another one-minute closing statement, and then we will go in order of backwards, you know, from five to one. During the audience question time, if a specific question is directed to a candidate that pertains to all of you, I will ask you each the question as well. Answers should be no more than 60 seconds, and you will be timed. I am going to be the timer, and I will tell you when your time is up. Most likely, all questions will be asked of every candidate. Unless there's a personal question, which so far we haven't gotten any yet. I will also caution all audience members to ask questions that pertain to our city government. I will not allow questions about national politics. This is a local, nonpartisan race, and this debate will focus on the important issues regarding city and regional policies only. Okay. I think that's all the rules and regulations, unless I forgot something.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
We have a request that you move your mic closer to you because the audience needs a little more volume. Thank you.
That's really hard for me to believe, but, okay. Audience, is that better? I hope so. Okay, so we will start with Rachel Riddell Harris, and she will introduce herself and tell us a little bit about herself. Rachel?
Okay. First, thank you to the state theater and to everyone participating tonight. My name is Rachel Riddell Harris, and I hope to earn the privilege of serving as your next city council member. We know that our area is unique, and we're strongly connected to our historic roots and our neighbor-based hometown feel. And our town, even now, is vibrant, social, and delicious. I grew up in Weimar, and I went to high school at Colfax High School. And when you live in Weimar, you spend most of your time in Auburn. I was on the junior fairboard, I worked at the finish line of the Tevis Cup, and I spent many times in the light parade. Then I left for school. I got a BS in civil and environmental engineering and a master's in business administration. And weaving those together, I've spent 12 years creating and managing energy programs for SMUD, the Northern California Power Agency, and Roseville Electric. When I married my wonderful husband, we began our family together, and I came home to Auburn. I love our beautiful town, and I wanted to raise my kids with the same amazing people that I grew up with. So while I would say that my qualifications include managing large projects, being a civil engineer, extensive experience with municipal red tape, and understanding budgets, my strongest qualification is my passion and love for this place in our community. There are several priorities, but given the time, I'd like to just mention two. COVID has impacted and will continue to impact our local businesses, our economy, and our families that live here. Addressing this is our most immediate priority. The second is updating our general plan. A general plan is basically a community agreement that broadly defines our goals, things that we want to do, where we want to build things, and our long-term roadmap. Auburn hasn't updated our general plan in 30 years. Before email was widely used or cell phones existed, fire wasn't a critical situation as it is now, our community is very different than it was 30 years ago. We need to catch up and put ourselves in the driver's seat. I appreciate the opportunity to hear from you tonight and to share my thoughts, so thank you again.
Boy, you timed that perfectly. Thank you. Roger, you're next.
Okay. Well, first, I'd say thank you for hosting this, and I also want to try and help the people in the audience exactly how to say that name. It's not that difficult. It's actually, you break it into two words, lube, like you take your car down, get oil and lube, and the last word is come in, like someone comes to your front door and you say, "Come in." So if you say, "Lube, come in," you've got pretty darn close, and I'll accept that. I am running for city council because I have the experience necessary to keep Auburn moving forward. My three decades of working for a city government, my four years on the Auburn Planning Commission, two years as chair, five years on the technology commission, and also two years on the Placer County Grand Jury, gives me a unique perspective that doesn't currently exist on the city council. Now, Auburn is facing some serious issues over the next few years, and our revenue is decreasing, and our costs, however, are continuing to climb. This is going to take some really thinking outside the box to find answers to these challenges. Now, that's what I do. I identify problems, I work with the team, and we find solutions. So after tonight, I'm hoping that you'll listen to my answers and see that I have a good grasp of the issues here, and that I have some reasonable answers, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. All right, next is Alice.
Good evening, Councilmember Mackey, and to you watching live via Zoom. I'm grateful to have this opportunity to share with you my goals as a city council member and to answer any questions that you may have. My family settled in the Auburn area in the 1840s on a ranch near the American River, the same property where my sister and I grew up and where my mother lives today. I spent most of my life in Auburn, attending local schools, volunteering countless hours of community service, and serving in various local government positions, including city council, and raising my family. This is my hometown, and I want it to be a vibrant, safe community for generations to come. Using my extensive experience and my passion to make Auburn the best that it can be is my way of giving back to a community that I love. I've dedicated more than three decades to serving the public within state and local government, including serving in the cabinets of two California governors and as an Auburn mayor and city council member. I chaired the planning commission before my unanimous appointment to the Auburn City Council in May 2020. I believe I was appointed in part because I was able to roll up my sleeves and get right to work. In fact, during my first few weeks, we hired a city manager, approved a balanced budget, and worked hard to assist our businesses in light of COVID-19. As a council member, a few of my priorities are stimulating our local economy. We have many stellar businesses in Auburn, which are the backbone of our economy. We must work together to promote Auburn and to do all that we can to help stimulate the local economy and create jobs in the light of COVID-19 pandemic and beyond. Also, enhancing public safety. With the high threat of wildfire and some criminal activity, working hard to ensure a safe, enjoyable, and prosperous community are key. I will not only work in step with our police and fire departments to make sure they have the resources needed to protect Auburn, but I will promote regional, state, and federal partnerships to accomplish these goals as well. I look forward to discussing these and other issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, turn off. Sorry, guys. I don't know why it's like... It's a new phone, too. I don't know why the problem I'm having with it. Okay. Dan, I'm so sorry.
No worries.
I'll give you an extra five seconds for that.
I don't think I'll need it. Hi, I'm Dan Grumley. I'm proud to tell you I've only had one government job, and that was working for Ronald Reagan. I was a paratrooper with the Elite 82nd Airborne Division. I'm very proud of that, and I'm the only veteran on the stage tonight. I have a wealth of business experience. I've been a CEO, I've been an executive vice president for multimillion-dollar companies. I actually live downtown, just behind this state theater, in fact, and I have a habit of getting things done. The mural on the back of this state theater was my idea. I brought in a technology company from Europe to do that, and also the mural on the Chamber of Commerce. And if you like that beautiful salmon and steelhead and trout sculpture downtown, that was my idea as well. That took a lot of work, and it took a lot of convincing at the local level, and I had a whole bunch of help from local volunteers and city leaders. I want you to know that I care about Auburn. I really care. I live downtown. I actually own a business downtown. I employ local people. The truth is, our basic problem is we have a city that 40,000 people use and 9,000 people pay for. I got involved with this election because downtown has 50 or so empty office spaces and buildings. Everybody sees it. That was before COVID. So whatever we've been doing in the past is not working. I have some real economic ideas on how to stimulate our local economy, and I'm the only guy, I believe, on this stage that can tell you that they've actually generated $200 million in business development themselves. Finally, I want you to know that I'm endorsed by Sandy Amara, Mike Holmes, Dick Azvedo, Ken Tokatomi, April Maynard, Gordy Ainsley, Nina Salerno Besselman, Jim Ferris, and I'm really proud to tell you I was just endorsed by Joanne Neff, the creator of Placer Grown. So that's my story. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, now, we're going to go forward with the questions. You each have one minute to answer the question. I'm going to go from left to right, and Alice will go first, then the next question, Dan will go first, and so on. Roger will be next, and then Rachel. Okay? So we did get a question, and I feel obligated to talk about this question. It is a person who wanted to know specifics about litigation that's happening with our Auburn Police Department and an incident that occurred a year or so ago. And because it's an ongoing legal matter, I cannot talk about it in public as a city council person, and Alice cannot address it. So, and I don't think it's appropriate to address at this forum. You can meet with him, and I'm sure he will meet with you and talk to you about it one-on-one. But I will ask, on his behalf, a less inflammatory question regarding how you personally feel about our Auburn Police Department and the job they do in our community. And I'll start with Alice.
Thank you very much. I'm proud to say that I'm very happy with our police department here in Auburn. Our police chief has been a tremendous leader, very proactive, very community-centric, reaching out to our community to work with them, educate them. Our police force are dedicated servants to ensure we are protected. Public health and safety is incredibly important to me. It's one of my key priorities. I feel that the city council has done well to support them. I think that there are opportunities to do more, but we've got a very fine police force, and I think that they're doing a great job, and I hope that they will continue to do the community outreach. Our work with the Community Action Team, dealing with the homeless, has been something that's new, something that we didn't have when I was first on the city council, and I'm really pleased to see our efforts in that particular area as well. But in all, I'm very pleased with what they're doing, and I think they're doing a great job with regards to our community.
Thank you.
Wow.
Okay, Dan?
Well, I think that the thin blue line is...
Wait a second. Let me get my timer going. I'm so sorry.
Sure.
I didn't think... Maybe we do need your little kitchen timer.
And we're at one... We're going one minute?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead. Use it. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. I met with the chief. I've discussed the issues.
It's ridiculous.
The chief of police is another veteran, so we had a great discussion. I think I've got a handle on the issues. I think the thin blue line is real. I think that our police officers deserve our respect and appreciation every day, and I'm proud to be living in Auburn. I'm proud that we've got such a great police force, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Okay. Roger?
As you may know, I was a police officer for 26 years, so I know what makes a good police department and a bad police department. I have not seen anything in RC that says this is not a good police department. However, there's always room for improvement. We can look at the training. Is there more money we can spend on some training? We want to teach our officers to make sure they can diffuse situations and not escalate situations. So I think it's vital that we support our community, support our police, and have them as part of the community. I also see ways of enhancing their programs. I met with the chief, also discussed increasing the community service officer position to try and free up our officers from the more of the day-to-day activity and actually go out and get involved in the community and meet the citizens. So there's always room for improvement, and I'm looking forward to help contribute to that.
Thank you. And Rachel?
Thank you. Well, I've also met with the chief. It sounds like we've all talked to him, and we've heard about the great things he's doing to do outreach. I think that the police officers are doing the best that they can with the resources that they have available. At any one time, there's only two police officers that are out patrolling our streets at a time. So if there's something going on on two sides of town, it's very challenging for them to get to everywhere all at once. So I think that making sure that they have the resources that they need is very important. But I also think that there's opportunity for improvement. There are some people locally who have discussed having an oversight, a citizen oversight committee, and I've talked to the police officers union, and they're in support of it as well. It can't hurt to have extra people talking and figuring out how to improve our police department and coming up with new ideas and fresh ideas. So I would be in support of our police officers and our community coming together to figure out what we as a community want to do to improve our police department and really working together to find that balance.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay. Moving on, this is a question we got in advance. Actually, he asked two questions, so I'm going to pick the question I think that he might most want to hear from you about, and he can get mad at me later. What possibility is there of Auburn setting up a microgrid? What would be the advantage to Auburn if it was able to set up a microgrid? I'll start with you this time, Dan.
I haven't looked into that, but it's an interesting idea. I think that Mike Holmes has a great idea in that having the city lead by example by installing solar at City Hall and also the train station on the other side of town. But it's an interesting idea, and I'd be willing to look into it.
Thank you. Roger?
I haven't looked into that either, but I think one of the issues that still exists is PG&E is still the person that transports your electricity. So even though we would be able to maintain, have a little more control, like with Pioneer Electric and having our own grid, you're still going to be relying on getting some of the power to you over transportation lines. So it's going to be a little more difficult than it may appear. It's an interesting issue, and it's worth exploring.
Thank you. And Rachel? Who didn't turn their phone on?
Thank you. So while working at SMUD, I've actually worked on microgrid projects, so I actually understand the details behind them. And I think that they're great for smaller projects, maybe to keep the firehouses online if there's a power outage or some of our very important city buildings. On a case-by-case basis, there's some great technology that's coming out around electric vehicles. You'd get to have your own microgrid of just your house by using the battery that's in your car and using that to power your house during a power outage. There's some really interesting technologies coming out there, and I think it's so important, since we are... We actually are on the board for Pioneer, that there's someone with energy experience that can help us to better understand how to get the most out of having our own power company. So I think that that's really important, and we should look into all those different options to help us improve our grid and make sure that we can have safe and reliable power all the time.
Thank you. Okay. Let me just set this again. Okay. Okay, Alice?
Thank you very much. It's a great question. Actually, the city is working with PG&E, actually, in pioneer energy... I have a hard time with that, to establish a microgrid. We actually established one because when we found with the last power outage, we had City Hall was powered up, but the police department wasn't. So we went to work right away, and they set up a microgrid to ensure that now the police department is on the same grid as City Hall, so that we can have power to ensure we have public health and safety during our power shut-offs. And I know that we're currently working to establish another microgrid for our downtown businesses as well, because it's important that we keep our businesses open during those planned power shut-offs as well. So that is something that we're looking into, that I fully support, and will continue to work with Pioneer to ensure that we can create additional microgrids where appropriate to keep our city up and running during these critical shut-offs.
Thank you. Okay, you will start next, Roger. And I got two questions that were very similar about internet access in our city, and so I'm going to kind of combine them. And they would like to know what, as a city council member, you could do to ensure that Auburn families have affordable access to the internet, and some cities, such as Sacramento, offer free public internet access. If elected, what efforts would you make to establish a citywide system for public internet access?
Well, that's an interesting question. As somebody that didn't have high-speed internet for 10, first 10 years I lived here, I can feel their pain. Having to go through a DSL line was not pleasurable. We have a contract with WAVE Broadband, and they want to be the company here in our city that delivers both broadband and the cable. So that contract is reviewed by the city on a regular basis, and it's something that you can look into. Start making... Next time the contract comes up, start looking at opportunities to expand that or go out to bid to other companies and include that as an option, lowering the price or making some free public access or having access available for people, different income levels. So that's something to explore when that contract comes up, and I'm not sure when that will be, but it's something to look at.
Thank you, Roger. Rachel?
As we've...
Sorry.
Oh, no problem. As we're all dealing with remote learning for our kids, it's critical that we work on making sure that everyone has access to the internet. I've heard lots of stories of kids having to sit in their school parking lots or the parking lots of other random commercial buildings so that they can use Wi-Fi and have access to doing their classes, and that's just not acceptable. And we need to figure out a way to ensure that our children are allowed to get the education that they need and they deserve, and it's not based on their income or the location that they live, but that they all have access to that. So I think this issue is not just an issue about getting access to the internet, but it's getting access to education and making sure that everyone has equal access to that education, and I think that's everyone's priority.
Thank you. Alice?
Thank you very much. Yes, I agree that internet access is critical, especially right now with distance learning in our kids, as Rachel had mentioned. I know that as a school board member, we also experience difficulties with students that are unable to have access. Some schools are able to provide hotspots, but even that isn't always a solution, depending on how rural you may be or where your home might be located. But as Roger also mentioned, we do have a franchise agreement with WAVE Communications to provide our broadband and our cable access. And so I certainly would be willing and wanting to meet with them and actually look through the franchise agreement now, see what opportunities exist for providing internet access to our low or very low income. And if there isn't a program that's already in place, then I would look to put one in, even if it meant a possible amendment to the agreement. But certainly, again, having that internet access is incredibly critical, especially during these difficult times of COVID, and so I would want to do everything that I could to ensure that our residents have that access.
Thank you. And Dan?
Well, yeah, I think it's naturally a good idea to have public hotspots and more access to the internet. I think we can do that pretty easily by starting with Central Square to support people that are downtown and encourage them to stay longer. So yeah, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea, as long as it doesn't cost us any money.
Thank you. Okay. The next question is another one that somebody sent in that asked two questions. So I'm going to ask the obvious question that I know that probably everybody wants to hear. There have been a great deal of firebreak... There has been a great deal of firebreak work on the canyon side of town, which needs to be done. However, a few weeks ago, there was a fire in Baltimore Ravine, and fortunately, it was contained to approximately 10 acres. Thank you, firefighters. We were very fortunate that there was minimal wind that day, or it could have become a major fire. How would you engage the private property owners, Union Pacific, mainly Union Pacific, and the United Auburn Indian community, but others as well, to create a fire break? And Rachel, it sure turned to go first.
Thank you for the question. I think it's important to have an open dialogue with the people that are just, I would imagine, as concerned as everyone else is about these fires. These fires have been taking out homes and businesses. Recently, a summer camp for kids with cancer that I've worked at for years just burned to the ground up outside of Lake Orville, and I think we all need to work together, have that open line of conversation with those private property owners, and come up with a plan. I think that having that dialogue and working together as a community to really push that forward, maybe they don't have the resources they need, or maybe they need financial assistance. We need to figure out what their issues are and the reason that they can't maintain that fire break, and then we need to help as a community to work together to get that done.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, Alice?
Yes, thank you very much for the question. The threat of wildfire is very significant in our community. I think we all know that. It's one of my priorities as a city council member. I think the question was specifically dealing with a couple of private property owners, specifically the United Auburn Indian community and the UP Railroad. I know that the United Auburn Indian community is doing some shaded fuel break work on their property. If we need to do more, then I would like to be able to engage in discussions with them and see what we can do to help facilitate or move things along quicker, but I know that they are engaged. They do recognize the threat to the communities neighboring their property there in Baltimore Ravine. In addition, the railroad, they have a significant right-of-way that goes through, and that is their responsibility to maintain. I do have a personal relationship with the local government representative with the UP, and so I would absolutely want to sit down with them and talk to them about ensuring that they... about ensuring that they are maintaining their right of way to protect our community from fire.
Thank you. And Dan?
Yeah, the question really was, how would you engage? And that has everything to do with communication. And you know, the best businesses, the best city governments, the best governments, the best anything really, all revolve around good communication. And I don't think you have to have a personal relationship really to deal with and attack these issues. It really means being proactive and get out there and talk to people and gain consensus. And so this is an important issue and God bless our firefighters. And I think that we need to do this.
Thank you. Okay. And Roger?
As someone that lives in that area, I know that the threat is real. I remember when I came out a couple of weeks ago and saw all the smoke and saw the planes flying over, that we had some serious issues. I think what we have to do as a city is first identify all the problem areas. Go and look and see what is the area of our concern and then identify what the solutions are. Once we have them and know what the problem is, know what the solutions are, then we go to the stakeholders and say, here's the problem. This is what we want you to do and we need you to do it. And then somehow the city's got to start holding their feet to the fire. And because, no pun intended. But we need to make sure that that area is nice and clean and that there's no threat. So we have to do everything we can to prevent that fire.
Thank you. Okay. This next question is regarding the Auburn Union School District. Auburn Union School District is one of the city's biggest employers and three of our five schools are within the city limits. If elected, what efforts would you make to establish a partnership with the district to provide essential services and support to our students and families? I think there's a lot more to that question than she really asked. So, okay, I think it's your turn to go first, Alice.
Thank you very much. I actually sat down with the board president for our local elementary school district and talked about some of the concerns that they have for their students and their families that live within the city of Auburn. And I have committed to sitting down on a two-by-two meeting with her and with their superintendent, along with another member of the city council, to talk about the issues of commonality. Clearly, the residents that attend the schools are residents of the city. We provide them with services. I know there was some discussion about internet, for example. We kind of talked about that a little bit now. But I think that having a partnership with our regional partners is incredibly important and I absolutely support engaging with them to solve common problems. So that's something that's important to me. And our school districts, again, I serve on a local school board. So I am unique in that I do have some clear understandings of the issues that they face and that our families face. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, our local school district's important and children are our future. That's the bottom line. But I think that one of the things that we can do to assist our school district is really provide affordable housing for our teachers. And I think that we need to do a better job as a city with the ADU issue and building these additional dwelling units. But yeah, if elected, I'd be happy to sit down and really talk about all of the needs that they have and then see how the city could help.
Thank you. Okay, Roger?
I agree with both of them. I think that communication is the key of sitting down and discussing it. It's very similar to what our city council is currently doing with the business districts, find out what their needs are during this COVID times. Same thing could happen with the schools. You could sit down and have regular meetings with them and have a discussion on what are their needs. And then if we're not, we aren't the provider of that need, we have to help them find whoever that provider is and assist them and gain the problems resolved.
Thank you, Roger. And Rachel? Sorry.
Thank you. Well, I think this is actually a pretty big problem. When I, I'm on the PTC for Skyridge Elementary and my daughter's in kindergarten. And one of the things that surprised me was how little the city interacts with the schools and helps them during their fundraising and helps them to get word out on events. I think there's a lot more that the city could be doing and the community could be doing to support our schools. When I talked to the president of the Teachers Association, she was surprised that I was calling because they've never got, she's never gotten a call from anyone that has to do with the Auburn city government before. And I've gotten endorsements from several of the board members as well because I think that there's a partnership that we're missing out on that we could really have, which wouldn't just help the schools, but would also help our local businesses. Because what brings people to a community and brings new business? Having good schools. People want to move to places that have good schools and they want to start their businesses in areas that have good schools. So I think that's critical for helping both the city and for helping our local schools.
Well, you've got that time down, Pat. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to start taking some questions from the audience online. And I believe it is Dan's turn to go first?
Yes.
I lost track here. Sorry. I knew that was going to happen. Okay, the question is, what is the most significant thing that city council can do to improve the quality of life for the Auburn residents? And how would you propose making that happen?
It's a great question and it's the hardest question. You know, my dad always said the right thing and the hard thing are almost always the same thing. And the truth is, we have this huge problem and that is our business districts are not thriving. They're not thriving to the point that it's providing more revenue for our general fund. And what we need is to really revitalize our downtown, create new high-tech jobs downtown. And that will increase our general fund so that we can pave our streets, serve our seniors and do the things that we need to do, that we all know that need to have, may be done. But it's just not in the budget at this time.
Thank you, Dan. Roger?
Yes, I think that the most impact you could possibly have is infrastructure. I think we're a little behind in the infrastructure and that affects the quality of life. As Dan was saying, the roads need some serious work. And we need to spend some time making sure that the city looks good and that'll draw people in. That also is protected, has a good police department. So there's several things we need for quality of life. But infrastructure is probably the thing that's lacking right now and needs a little work.
Thank you. And Rachel?
What I think is that all of these items are under the same umbrella of we need a plan. Like I said before, we haven't had a general plan or haven't created a general plan since 1992, which these are supposed to be done every 10 to 20 years. So we're behind. In a general plan, you normally discuss everything as a community and get lots of community input on what businesses do you want to have? What do we want to do about transportation issues, fire issues? How do we want to do economic development? What do we want our city to be when, over the next 10 to 20 years? So I think all of these things are under the heading of, we need to stop, we need to collaborate, we need to outreach to the community members and decide where we want to be, what kind of businesses we want to bring in. And once we have a plan, we can start moving forward. We, the city has defunded our economic development position. I think that's an important part of how we're going to move forward is to bring in new business. And I think all of that can be discussed if we work together on getting that general plan done.
Thank you. Okay. Alice?
Thank you.
Sorry.
Enriching our quality of life is something that I think all of us on the stage here can agree to is important and something that we all, as city council members and citizens, really strive for. Certainly, public safety and enhancing public safety is critical and ensuring that our residents, our businesses are safe. That is from, with law enforcement and also from fire. Fire is such a huge issue for us in our community and it can be so devastating. And it's critical that we have the appropriate protection for our citizens, for our businesses and for our visitors as well. I think that also improving our quality of life is promoting our businesses and helping to help them thrive. Because when they thrive, then we thrive. But also, it's about community service. We're so unfortunate, so fortunate in Auburn to have such, so many organizations that work hard together to better our community. And I think that whatever the city can do to help foster that is certainly a good thing.
Thank you. Okay. So the next question, Rachel's going to love. It is regarding, the last comprehensive update to the city's general plan was 1993. The plan, which is the blueprint for the city, is intended to be used by the council, commissions and city staff to make day-to-day decisions. It's totally outdated and needs to be updated with relevant data, figures and policies. If elected, what would you do to address the need for a comprehensive update to the general plan? And Roger, I think it's your turn to go first.
Well, the first thing we have to do is budget some money for it because it's not something that the staff can do on its own. It's pretty comprehensive, a lot of detail, a lot of research. And it's going to cost a lot of money and that's probably why it hasn't been done. So as the city council first has to do is figure out how they're going to pay for it. And because it is a critical element of the city. Once we can figure that out, then we budget for it. And it may not be something you can do all at one time. It may be something you have to do in pieces that, as you can afford it. So you may want to look at some of the, break it down into different sections and figure out what's the most critical. Let's work on those first if we can afford it. And then we go to the next and we go until we get them all completely done. And we almost be like working on the Golden Gate Bridge. You start painting at one end and you keep working forever on it. And that's what we should be doing, the general plan. You start now and you just keep working on it. And it's like an always evolving document.
Thank you, Roger. And Rachel?
Well, obviously, I think having a general plan update is important. How we do it, there's, the nice thing is a couple of the sections have been worked on, like fire and a couple of other areas. So those ones won't take as much work. There are possibly some other funding sources for it. But really, I wouldn't be able to tell exactly how we pay for it until I get into city council and can really look at the books and figure out where that makes sense. But I think that it's important that we really get together, come up with a plan, work to move our city forward. In the plan that I, when I read the old general plan, it said, we're really hoping that Placer County won't grow around us. I think that ship has sailed. So I think we need to start thinking about how we're going to fit into the world we're in now, where we think our place is in the future. And that's not just the city council. That's all of you out there too, that need to come together and come up with ideas and think through where, what we want to be. And I think that's really critical because we're having budget issues now. We all know from our households that having budget issues, you need to plan for the future.
Thank you. And Alice?
Yes, that's the age-old question. Certainly, our general plan is very old, as Rachel has indicated. And the big difficulty has been from a budget perspective. I believe the last estimates were about a million and a half at least for a general plan amendment. When you go in and amend the plan, there are sequoia documents that are required. And so it's a very comprehensive document. It's a very important document and it does establish a roadmap. So I do certainly value the general plan. And we have been tackling it a little bit at a time. Right now, we're in the process of amending the safety element and the housing element. That's due to the state by May of 2021. So we are engaging in that process. There are some grant monies that are available to assist us in that endeavor. But it really is, and what we would have to do was really kind of pick it apart and take it element by element because it is such a comprehensive, time-consuming for staff. You know, we've got a shortage with staff and so forth and expensive. Again, not to say we shouldn't do it, but it is something that we really would need to be able to have the finances necessary to do a comprehensive general plan amendment. So at this point, I do support moving forward with the elements. But definitely, if we have money, then we should amend it.
Update it.
Okay. Dan?
Hi. The key word here is multi-use zoning. We need to update our general plan to include multi-use zoning. We need more foot traffic downtown. My passion is to restore downtown and Old Town and our other business districts. I had a lengthy meeting last week with our new city manager, John Dunlevy. I was impressed by him. I was, I discussed the general plan. I discussed how we might update that. And I think that there are some solutions that we could, we could do without the lengthy revision of the general plan. So I'm in favor of moving more quickly, as I said, to revitalize our downtown.
Thank you very much. All right. The next question. With the declining enrollment still a problem at our local schools, how would you resolve this problem? And next is Rachel. You will start.
Okay.
It's what? No, did you? I'm sorry. It's Rachel. Yes.
Okay, we're talking about declining enrollment.
Rachel, it is your turn to go first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, obviously, this is an issue for many, many schools, right now especially. My daughter's classroom that's remote, it's really obvious to see that not all the kindergarten students are showing up. And it's challenging for not just the students, but their parents. Trying to get them online has been a big challenge. So I think that if we can get our kids back in school in a safe way, that's a good way of trying to get that enrollment back up because parents are having a hard time. I know I am, working full-time and managing their children while being on a Zoom call. I don't know if you've ever seen a Zoom call of 20 kindergarteners, but the parent, that teacher is so patient, but she's doing the best she can. But it's still hard to engage with kindergartners of a remote learning situation. So I think that we really need to get people, our students, back in the classroom and that'll help our, get our enrollment up and also help build up our schools. And that'll get more people to move to the area because they'll want to come for the good schools.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay. Alice?
Thank you. It's an interesting question that, you know, really the enrollment is something that's under the auspice of the school district itself. But what, some of the things that the city might be able to help with would be, again, to partner with the school district to ensure that they have all the services they need for their, for their students. Or if there's any, again, the relationships, if there are things that we could be providing, assisting them with, and certainly would want to help with that endeavor. Perhaps increasing enrollment would mean that we would need to have more affordable housing for families that have children that are school age. Because certainly, a community that has more families, has more students that can attend schools. So maybe it's looking at our housing options and making sure that we do have affordable opportunities. We have some programs with the city that help first-time homebuyers. They're not very known. We don't have a lot of money there, but we do have a little bit. So there are some programs to try to get it and to bring people in that do have children. And really, it is also making our community attractive to families with children that might be going to local schools.
Thank you, Alice. Okay. Dan?
Well, once again, the hard thing and the right thing are almost always the same thing. And that is, if we do a better job creating a vibrant local economy downtown, it will take care of enrollment in schools. People will want to live here. High-tech jobs pay more. Property values will rise. This will all take care of itself.
Thank you. And Roger?
This problem is, it will take care of itself, but it's going to be a long time. I've seen it in many different places, different communities. It happens everywhere. You come, families get raised and children move away, but the parents stay. And it's happened in communities all over the place where they start shutting down schools, trying to consolidate schools. And then what happens? About 10 years later, they have to reopen schools because the people that were living in those homes decide to move and new families come in. So we have to just make sure that our schools stay top-notch, that they would be attractive to people to come here because that's what the people look at when they're looking at relocating is the schools. So I think we have to, it's going to be a little bit of time. We're going to wait. It will change and it will grow again. But we just have to make sure our schools are maintained and have a high standard.
Okay. Thank you, Roger. Okay, so, let me cancel that. Alice, you'll take this next question first. Downtown sidewalks, another critical infrastructure, needs refreshing. And more and lots of visible parking would help attract and support businesses. Do you agree and what would you do to help?
Yes, we do have some work that we need to do in our downtown and Old Town districts, certainly from an infrastructure perspective. Certainly, we've worked with our downtown business association as well as Old Town to try to address some of those issues. Parking has been something that we have tried for many, many years to discuss and to provide viable solutions. We did construct a parking lot on Magnolia to help alleviate some of that. But it, you know, there's been some discussion of a parking structure at some point in time. Again, the answer is where do you come up with the funding? But there are grants available, especially at the state level. So if there are some opportunities that we can take advantage of there. And also, really, public-private partnerships. I'm a huge proponent for those. We've been We've been able to achieve so much with that. For example, our beautiful school park preserve, that was all done with a public-private partnership. And so there might be some opportunities there, but we do need some improvements there. I think that, again, revitalizing and helping our downtown to bring more money will also help fund those.
Dan?
I would just say 30 years is enough. Downtown's been struggling for 30 years, and it's enough. The hard thing and the right thing are always the same thing, and we need to revitalize downtown. And when we do that and when we start generating income, we can pay for things like parking structures. So as I said, I think the revitalization and stimulation of our local business is key. This was before COVID. There were 50 empty office spaces downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
The, there's no question parking is a problem downtown and Old Town. We have time zones out there, and unfortunately, we have no parking enforcement in this city. So they can be totally ignored. Nobody marks tires, nobody gets tickets. And maybe if we had a little parking enforcement, it might motivate people to move their cars because you can go to Old Town and Downtown, and you can see some cars parked there all day. Now, as far as sidewalks, that's going to have to be a public and private enterprise. The downtown business association, Old Town, they all have a vested interest. Now, Old Town has some very unique characteristics with some of their sidewalks, if you want to call them sidewalks. And so it's going to be a working together to try and resolve the problem. It's not going to be something the city alone can do because they don't have the finances. We have so many infrastructure problems, the roads and everything else, that's just one piece of the puzzle.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yes, so parking and sidewalks are definitely something that could use refreshing, and I think that they could definitely be improved to be, make our city more walkable and bikeable. But I think that the larger issue in, in downtown especially is that we could have, I would really love to use some of those 50 vacant spots to have some more mixed-use housing where people live above our businesses. If we can get more people living downtown and more affordable housing, like apartment complexes or apartments that are above businesses, then we'll have more people walking around. Also, if we bring in more charging stations, maybe we can be the gas station as people go up to Reno and Tahoe. People can stop, charge their car, have lunch, go shopping. But the main thing for me is that I can't shop downtown a lot of times because everything's closed after 5:00 when I'm off work. I'd really love to have at least one night a week where everything stays open late, and we can all walk around and see what the businesses are that are really available to us that we can't have access to while we're at work during the day.
Thank you very much. All right, so now we're going on to another question. I'm not really comfortable with anonymous questions. It bothers me a bit that people would send an anonymous question. And one question I am not going to ask because it is about the national election and about a person's stance on the president and so on. So I'm going to disallow that question, so, and this is also from an anonymous person. Maybe I would have asked the question if they'd signed their name. So I'm going to move on to the next question. What plans would you propose to help address? And this person has asked two questions, so I'm only going to ask this one question. What plans would you propose to help address the rampant homeless issue? And I believe it's Dan's turn to go first.
Well, I live downtown, and I see this issue all the time. I've had lengthy conversations with the chief of police and also the city manager, as I've said. I think that, I think that we end up being the county seat as Auburn, and I think we need more help from the county government. I mean, there are no real public spaces in North Auburn where homeless congregate. The fact is, they're here in Auburn, but we end up kind of holding that bag. So I think that we should ask for a little bit more help from the county government. But I think that we're on top of it. I think the chief is on top of it. The city manager runs every day, you know, as he's mentioned, and, you know, keeps, keeps track of it.
Thank you. Roger?
I spoke to the police chief about it also, and, and homelessness is not really a police issue. It's one of those jobs that we're thrust on police. It's really a social issue. They have a strike force that works it now and goes out into the public and tries to contact the homeless. We need to have that strike force increased a little bit more and actually have a social worker that's, goes out with them, assign there, one-on-one, meet with these people, find out what their needs are. Are they homeless because they need a job? Then let's help them with that. Are they homeless because they have some mental issues? Then let's get some therapy and some help for them on that. If they're homeless because they just want to be homeless, let's try and move them along. So it's, it's one of the things I brought up with the chief was the expanding the community service officer program. He said if you had a couple more part-time community service officers, they get assigned one of those to also help with the homeless. So there are solutions out there, but you can't depend just on the police.
Thank you, Roger. And Rachel?
Thank you. So we all want to feel safe in our community. We all want to be able to walk up and down the street or, or go into our homes and not have to worry about stepping over people or feeling like there might be some safety issues because of the homeless. At the same time, we also want to make sure we're taking care of our community. Many of the homeless are vets or mentally ill or have other issues, and we need to make sure we're taking care of those members of our community as well. Speaking with the chief, he said about, we have about 40 homeless that are perpetually homeless in Auburn that he's been working with. Sometimes it's as easy as helping them get a driver's license and a P.O. box so that way they can get a job. I think the CAT team has done, the Community Action Team has done a great job of, of working on that, and I think that having a part-time social worker working for the city of Auburn could really help to move that forward to get, getting those resources. But I also think there's easy things we could do, like improving the lighting in certain areas to make it so people aren't as comfortable hanging out in certain places. So improving the different environments to make them safe, I think, also helps.
Thank you. And Alice?
Thank you. Yes, this seems to be the question of the year or of the decade, and so many of us are working so diligently to try to solve it at the state level, at the regional level, at the local level. And it really is, it's incredibly difficult, it's, it's a very sad state. Here in Auburn, as it was mentioned, we've got about 40 individuals who are chronically homeless. We have the Community Action Team that has been developed within the police department to go out and, with our regional partners, we do partner with the county Health and Human Services staff to touch these individuals and to try to ensure that they know what resources are available to them. And, and so we are working on that. We do have a strategic plan that I am actually in the process of reviewing to try to assist us there. There is more that we could do, and I think that if we had additional funding for our police department, there could be some expansion in that particular program as well. But we can also support our nonprofits that do so much for the, for the homeless. We have the Gathering Inn and other organizations, so if we can all just support them as well. Thank you.
Okay, Dan?
Yeah. I think I answered the question, didn't I?
Oh, you already answered the question. Sorry. That's right. Okay, so now we have a gentleman that has asked a question that he, I've already asked a question for him on the initial questions, and I just want to say this on the record. And I only, I'm only giving one question to each person until, unless we have time at the end, so I'm going to skip his question and go on to the next. This is a long one, so, and I think, Roger, are you first this time? Yes. Okay, on quality of life, what do you intend to do to make Auburn more attractive in terms of health and outdoor activities? Examples include engagement with the Auburn State Recreation Area General Plan, support the emerging Auburn Bike Park, which is even now more popular, particularly for younger children, and making downtown and Old Town more friendly to bicycle use.
Wow, that's a good one. Well, first, we've always had a good partnership with ARD, and we need to continue that, and a lot of that falls into their, their jurisdiction as far as parks and recreation areas. As far as getting Old Town and more friendly for bikes, that's not going to be an easy task unless you're going to close and into a one-way street. You've all driven down in Old Town, and you're barely get by when this car's parked on both sides, so I'm not sure how you do that unless you actually start closing down some streets, and that would, that would not be great for the business. So Old Town may be difficult to do. There was a lot on that question. I probably missed some stuff.
Support of the Auburn State Recreation Area General Plan?
That is just, again, working with the Bureau of Land Management and try and make sure that we have a, a good understanding of what their requirements are, what we expect from them, and then also what we can do to help them.
Thank you. All right, Rachel?
Thanks. I think that we can make things a little bit more bikeable and walkable in our area if we think through how we want traffic flows to be, especially, I think, in our downtown area, that's a possibility. But I think to partner more with the, the state recreation area, I would really love to have an electric bus that brings people down there. People park up in, in Auburn, shop, eat lunch, and then can go down into the canyon. They don't have to worry about the traffic and the parking fees, and I think that would both lead to reduced traffic, reduced emissions from cars, and it would also bring more people walking around different areas in Auburn, depending on where we wanted them to park. So I think there's a lot of opportunities to partner with local places that we could improve the access to our, our recreation areas and also improve our health through the lower emissions in the area.
Thank you. All right, Alice?
Yes, that was a loaded question, lots of different points. First of all, I would certainly support continuing to advocate for Auburn as the endurance capital of the, of the world. It's a great title. We have so many tremendous events here, by foot, by horse, by bike, by swim, it's great. So whatever we can do to try, to continue to promote that and to partner with various groups that are putting on those events is a good thing. We have a good relationship with ARD and with state parks as well. Certainly, ARD manages the majority of the, of the local parks here in the city. We, the city only manages a few. But I wanted to say with regard to the Auburn State Recreation Plan update, general plan update, they've been in that process for a number of years now, and there are some significant concerns that the city's actually weighed in with regards to potential camping on the El Dorado County side that could potentially impact us from a fire perspective. And so we have been very vocal in those concerns to the state and want to continue to protect our community from fire.
Thank you. And Dan?
Well, I'm endorsed by two ARD board members, Jim Ferris and Gordy Ainsley. The idea is we need more trees downtown. If you have more trees, people are much likely, much more likely to walk around downtown. If you walk down High Street towards the old Salvation Army, it's hot as heck during summer. You don't want to walk more than 100 yards without diving into a building. We need trees downtown. So that would be an easy solution to start to encourage more healthy activity downtown.
Thank you. Okay, so the next question, and Rachel, you'll be starting with this one. Increasing tourism can increase business shops, foot traffic. What are your thoughts for increasing tourists to visit and stay longer, to spend more tourist dollars in the Auburn shops and restaurants and motels?
Okay, well, I've, I've talked a little bit about possibly having electric vehicle charging and having that bring people in, at least while they're charging for the day or for the, the moment, and they can have lunch and they can go walking around. I also think that our, our large events at the fairgrounds, the fairgrounds is such a great asset to the city. I think that really brings people in. I just had someone the other day talk about when we had the Black and White Ball in town and how much they enjoyed seeing the different, the different places in town and that they wanted to come back and go shopping. So I think having more events in downtown and Old Town, I think having more things for people to come from different areas, not just to drive through town, but as a destination. I know people come from all over to go to our farmer's market, so things like that. I think we could try more things, try, try more events, and I think that that really would draw more people in.
Thank you. Alice?
And that's another very good question. Certainly, we have a variety of ways that we can try to bring more people down. We've got so many different businesses. We have wineries, we have breweries, they have events, we can work with them to help promote those particular activities. Again, economic, we are the endurance capital of the world, so we can continue to promote that, bring people in with our, our events, and encourage people who come and utilize the trails to come and shop and dine downtown. We've got to be able to find a way to, to do that. I think that maybe with sponsorships at events, maybe better signage and so forth, but trying to bring people that are enjoying our canyon to our shops and to our restaurants is important, too. But we really need to focus a lot on economic development, bring more businesses in, different businesses that attract people that are coming from, we have a couple of businesses in downtown that bring customers from the Bay Area. That's fantastic because they come, they shop at other businesses, they dine, and hopefully they're telling their friends. But really, working with our business community to do all that we can to promote them.
Thank you. Dan?
This is not, this is not a hard question, and we sit on the edge of the American River Canyon. Monterey Bay Aquarium was founded sitting in a dilapidated downtown with one ecological asset. Wouldn't they love to have had 600,000 cars passing it every day? You know, I sat down this morning, a couple hours with our, the Gold Country Fairgrounds CEO, Don Ales. I was very impressed with that gentleman. We talked about actually using parking at the fairgrounds for access to the canyon with a slow drop-off points throughout the city to help them, encourage them to actually shop at our local, our local businesses. So this is pretty easy. We just need to get moving.
Thank you. Roger?
I think one thing that we are missing is our economic development director that we had here for a few years. I saw a noticeable change in our city when she was here working. We were well-advertised, some of the spreads in magazines were incredible. It created a lot of interest in our city, and unfortunately, when she left, the city council decided not to replace her and refund her. So hopefully, we'll get that going again and, and fund that position, and we need to have that one person in the city that can coordinate with all of our different associations and help them advertise as a group instead of having to do little advertising in all different groups, have one, one central location, economic development director. That person's responsible getting the word out. That person's responsible working with the associations, and that'll bring the business to town and, and bring them back to town. So I'm looking forward to that happening.
Thank you. Okay, and Rachel, you started that, right? Unless you'd like to talk some more about that? Okay, so we have this question again. Somebody had asked it twice, but now this is a new person, so we were going to start with you. No, it's a new one, Alice. How about a shuttle bus to the American River Confluence and China Bar?
Well, so that's, you know, what I, first of all, I want to say that we have opened up access at China Bar tremendously. I know that was some work that our late mayor was involved in and partnerships with the Auburn State Recreation Area to open that up so that you can drive all the way down now to Last Gasp, and there's restrooms there, and it's fabulous. We have some better access to that particular point via vehicles or, or biking. The canyon is utilized heavily. Certainly, the confluence area is very popular, especially in the summer, and I know that we have another candidate who will, will very gladly discuss this. This is something I know that she's very supportive of. And I think that for me, I would love to see if, if there was a shuttle bus, that it would be a private venture to see if, you know, someone that has some ideas and really find the financing behind it as well. If it were a city endeavor, you know, I guess we could take a look at our buses, but again, it's the cost, there's a cost issue, you know, with, with transit and so forth. But I think that any way that we can promote use of our cannon, canyon is a good thing, so.
Thank you.
Gee, it's a great idea. I just said that. The idea is that let's use our fairgrounds for parking. I think that being host and a champion of the American River Canyon and the restoration and protection thereof is a great idea. And when these actual buses come back, they drop off and actually have some commercials playing on the bus highlighting our local restaurants and our local shopping venues. playing on the bus highlighting our local restaurants and our local shopping venues. Let's get moving on this. I don't think it's that difficult.
Thank you. Okay, Roger?
As someone that's had to walk up Cardiac Hill, I would love to have a shuttle bus. You know, it's all, it comes down to cost. There's absolutely no reason not to do it. There's just a reason of how you pay for it. I think someone needs to do a study on that, take a look at what the costs are associated. We have a vehicle and just matter staffing it. This is something that we could charge people for. Is there some sort of private-public partnership, advertising, something else we can do to raise some money? But the first step is to, we all agree, I think it's a great idea. Next step is to, how do we pay for it? And once we figure that out, then we can just, it'll all be downhill.
And then up. Thank you. Rachel?
As a former river guide, I love getting access down to the river, and I think it's really important that we allow people that are not just avid hikers, but people that haven't necessarily gone to rivers before, some access and some education. I think that Park Protect the American River Canyon has some wonderful education brochures and books that would be great to provide to people on the bus to help them really to understand not just that we're going on a hike, but what is the landscape there? What's the history? What are all the animals and plants that they're seeing? So they can truly appreciate it and get that, not just that exercise, but that educational experience. And I think that Park's done a lot of good research on maybe how we could possibly fund it or what it would really take, what it would really cost to do. So I think partnering with our local nonprofits that really have a strong affinity for the canyon would be a great way of trying to figure out how to get that funding source so we can move forward with this project.
Thank you. Okay, this will be our last question, and I'm going to start with you, Dan. With catastrophic wildfire increasingly becoming a fundamental threat to our town, the city council put Measure S on the ballot. The one-cent sales tax, which could raise much-needed monies, $2.7 million annually approximately, for public safety, fire protection, and infrastructure. What are your thoughts on and positions on Measure S?
Well, my first thought is, I didn't put that on the ballot. And I think that the timing of this is wrong. I own a local business downtown. My business is down 75% this month, and that ends up being a tax directly on local businesses. So I think that the timing's wrong for it.
Okay, thank you. Roger?
Nobody likes new taxes. I don't like new taxes. However, I did look at the budget and tried to break it down and figured out how we're going to pay for different things that we need. And it's getting to a point that we're going to have to start making cuts in order to provide the services that the public wants. So it's going to come down to decision of what do we cut? What do we do? There's a lot of talk about defunding the police. That may not, that may be something you have to do because you can't afford police. The budget of public safety is over 50%. The salary of the police front is 47% of the city's salaries. So what do you want to do? I mean, do you want to cut the police? Do you want to cut fire? We need transportation, excuse me, we need more infrastructure. We need our roads paved. Now, what I pledge is that if we do pass Measure S, that that money will never be used for anything other than extra items, not for budget items.
Thank you. Rachel?
Thank you. The fire issue is really, and the budget issue is really why I started considering running for city council. I love our new Mighty Fire Station that got opened near our house. We went and bought a smoker for the firefighters there, my community did, and we think it's great that they're going to be there to provide protection from the canyon. Then when I was watching the city council meeting, I learned that there's no sustainable source of funding for those firefighters. And if this measure doesn't pass, then there's a good chance that they'll have to be let go and will have to close the fire station or cut something else dramatically. We need to make sure that we're figuring out our budget and coming up with a long-term plan. I'm on board, and I've supported this measure and this tax initiative just because we're in a lose-lose situation. We either have a tax or we lose some essential services that we need for fire protection. And so I think that in seven years, when it runs out, that if we plan ahead now, find those additional revenue sources, do the economic development that we need, bring more people in and get that sales revenue up, that maybe we can reduce or eliminate that tax in those seven years from now.
All right, Alice?
Yes, thank you very much. This issue came up before the council, I think, just weeks after my appointment in May, and it was very difficult for me. I am a fiscal conservative, and I was certainly following the issue before it came to the council, but I really had to dive in. I spoke with community leaders, I spoke with business leaders, I spoke with the fire chief and the police chief to truly understand what our situation is. And the fact of the matter is, our community deserves better fire protection and police protection as well. And the fact is, too, our budget is dwindling. We just do not have the resources necessary to provide the level of service that our residents and our businesses and our visitors deserve truly. And because of that, I voted to support putting the measure on the ballot and letting the voters decide if they feel it's important to them to increase the level of fire and police services. It does have a seven-year sunset, so it goes away, period, unless there's a new ballot on, a new measure on the ballot. For me, that's important.
Thank you. Okay. Before I get to your final one minute to wrap this up, I just want to thank all of you personally. It's not easy to run for city council. It's not easy to run for office, but a local election like this is even more difficult because you live in this community, and it doesn't matter where you go, somebody's going to be asking you questions. Takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of energy. And I am very impressed with the level of candidates we have this time around, and I would be happy if any of you won. I just want you to know that. So thank you very much for coming out tonight. And I'm going to start with Rachel. You will do the final one minute of why we should vote for you, and then we'll go this way. Isn't that, oh, I'm sorry.
We're reversed now.
I'm sorry, Dan. You're right. I'm in the wrong one.
First, last, call me. Doesn't matter.
It's Dan, Alice, Roger, then Rachel. Sorry.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. So, you know, folks, I'm no better than anybody on this stage. All of these people are good people, but I have a business background, and I have a habit of getting things done in town and it not costing the taxpayers anything. I'm a veteran. It's important to me. I love Auburn. I love all the, you know, colorful characters here, and I'm proud to have all of those big endorsements. So if elected, I'll do my very best to really move the needle and rejuvenate and revitalize our downtown. Thanks.
Thank you. Alice, you're next.
I love our community, and this is really my opportunity to give back to this community that I love so much and has done so much for my family. I am an Auburn native. Again, my roots go very back. My experience is extensive. I have more than three decades of experience working in the public sector. I've worked for governors, I've worked for the state legislature. I've served on the city council for two terms, and now I'm back. I've been asked to come back, and it's my pleasure to serve in this appointed capacity. And again, based on my extensive and relevant experience, my passion for my community, I believe I'm the right candidate right now, and it would be my honor and pleasure to continue serving. I'm proud of the support I have from the majority of our council members, Supervisor Cindy Gustafson, Supervisor Jim Holmes, Supervisor Bonnie Gore. I have Auburn firefighters, Local 4110 supporting me. Myriad of Auburn business owners are supporting me as well as leaders, and I'm very proud of that support, and I hope that you will vote for me in November. And to learn more, please visit my website, which is votalice.com. Thank you.
Okay. Tom threw me off, I'm sorry. He's supposed to be here. Okay, Roger, you're next.
Auburn's very fortunate to have well-qualified candidates for city council. What makes us different is our experience. Now, it's really going to be up to you to decide what experience is important. What do you want to see in a city council person? If you're looking for someone that has worked for a city for many years, that has volunteered and been on different commissions in the city and has also spent time investigating government affairs as a grand jury member, then I'm your candidate. So when you go to the ballot and the ballot comes in the mail, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom and look for the last person on the list, that's me, Roger Lupkerman. And please go to my website, electroger.org.
Thank you. Rachel?
Again, thank you to all the organizers and participants tonight. Every morning, I look at my daughter's face, and I'm reminded that the choices we make today will be the legacy that she inherits. I not only want our children to enjoy growing up here, but like me, I want them to have the opportunity to return home with their families. This community is precious, both the people and the land. We are surrounded by extraordinary beauty, which carries both risk and responsibility. We must be thoughtful stewards of the land as well as proactive about our fire risk. We need to ensure that firefighters have the support and the tools that they need to keep us safe. We should never have to choose between safe and reliable power, as we did last year and we're doing again this year, and I will work to reduce the frequency of those shut-offs. I'm dedicated to creating a contemporary general plan. I'll work collaboratively and creatively to support our local businesses and our families. There's a lot to do, and we can do it together. For more information, visit rachelforauburn.com. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, all of you. I neglected to introduce our executive director of the state theater, Janice Wyckoff, who's been taking all the questions and responding. So I'm sorry, Janice, I didn't mean to neglect you. Thank you again, all of our stalwart help on the cameras and everybody that attended tonight via Zoom. God, don't we love Zoom? And thank you, candidates, and good luck teaching every one of you.